I want to welcome everybody to the October 12th, 2021 Board of County Commissioners meetings. If everybody would sign at their devices, we'd greatly appreciate it. With that, if everybody would rise for the invocation of Commissioner Kitchen, we'll be giving that to us today.
Lord, thank you again for the just amazing opportunity is to have another day of life. What a gift it is from you. We pray that we would use it well, that we would use this honor of gathering together to conduct a business of our community. We do it in a way that's gracious, that's civil, that would bring glory to you and all that we do today. Lord, we know we sometimes have different opinions. We just pray that you would guide us to express them in a way that shows that we can disagree and still be friends and still get along and still be neighbors. Lord, we just thank you for those that sacrificed so much in the past and even today for our country, those serving in uniform at home and abroad, first responders. Lord, today I particularly lift up to you health issues. We have friends and people that are close to us that have dire health prayer requests and their families, and we just pray that you be with them and give them strength and heal all those affected. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If everybody stands for the pledge, we have two female veterans here today. One is Judge Jane Monday. She's retired Vietnam Vet Air Navy MS-1 photographer. Besides serving as treasurer for Female Veterans Network, she's also the president of the Fleet Reserve and active in American Legion. The second one we have is Ms. Kathy King. She was born in Columbus, Ohio, graduated from Park University in Missouri with a Bachelor of Management. She was enlisted in the Army in 1973 when women were called Women's Army Corp. She served three years and was assigned to the Army Security Agency, attending the rank of E Ford SPC. So if everybody will give them a round of applause and...
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, equal, justice for all.
And as always, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
All right, Madam Clerk Roko.
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This 12th day of October, 2021. In attendance are Chairman Scott Carnahan, First Vice Chairman Ronald D. Kitchen Jr., Second Vice Chairman Ruthie Schleball remotely, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Holly Davis, County Administrator Randy Oliver, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondlin.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Approval of the agenda, we got an addition of P1, and then we got extra information on E10 and E12. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Five, zero. Consent agenda, does anybody want to pull anything or take it in its entirety?
On the consent agenda, we would ask that rather than the November 30th meeting on universal collection be a workshop, we'd ask that that be a special meeting.
Okay.
Same day, same time.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda, but I would also like for you to read the dates of those workshops so that the public knows what they are.
Okay. So we got a motion by Commissioner Kitchen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. And Randy, let's read those dates of the workshops.
Okay, October 26th, there's a workshop at nine o'clock, wastewater treatment feasibility analysis subject to sewer. Approval of that will be on the agenda in the afternoon. At 10 o'clock on that same day, there's a discussion that the board asked for on leasing of B O C C buildings to nonprofits. We've included everything that we have. November 9th, there's a workshop at eight o'clock on waterfront setbacks, conditional uses, and then at nine o'clock residential road resurfacing, sales tax, and then the methodology and funding for how the roads are selected, which is what the board asked for. And then on November 30th, we have a special meeting on universal collection.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, the only question that I've got is on our November 9th workshop. The things that we discussed, or at least that I brought up that I'd like for us to discuss at that November 9th, was not only waterfront setbacks, but stormwater and variance criteria. And the only thing that seems to be making it here is waterfront setback and conditional uses.
And I agree with you, that was the criteria, so...
Okay, we can add that.
Okay. Commissioners, all that good? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, proclamations. Mr. Chair, motion to approve items C1 through 4. Okay, you got a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Five, zero. All right, with that, do we got anybody here?
Yes, watch your folks. Come on down.
For those representing fire prevention week, come forward, please. Okay. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, learn the sounds of fire safety. Whereas Citrus County, Florida is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in Citrus County. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. Whereas homes fires kills more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 homes. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger and the event of fire, in which you may have a little or two minutes to escape safety. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reporting home fires in half. And whereas Citrus County residents should be sure enough, everyone in the home understands the sounds of alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas the Citrus County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive in fire. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, is hereby proclaiming the week of October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week in Citrus County, Florida, and throughout the state, and urges all people of Citrus County to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week 2021, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Citrus County Fire and Emergency Service, signed by all five county commissioners.
We brought a couple of devices in. This one, smoke alarm, and listen to it. And just a couple of... Couple of quick things. There's actually two devices now, smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors, and there is a little bit of a difference. And from October 1, 2020, to October 1 of 2021, fire rescue has been out approximately 181 times to assist residents with smoke alarms. And that's everything from checking their batteries to helping them install new ones for alarms that were outdated or damaged. And a couple of quick items. In the U.S., according to ITSM, 96% of the homes have smoke alarms in this country. 20% of the homes with alarms installed, the alarms do not function. And we find that a lot in this county when we go out to the residents. And they predict that if 100% of the homes had functioning alarms, 1,100 lives per year would be saved in this country. And another thing a lot of people are not aware of is the carbon monoxide detectors. 42% of the homes that should have them have the carbon monoxide. But that leaves over half of them that should have carbon monoxide detectors don't have them. And the statistics, 170 people die per year from carbon monoxide poisoning unrelated to vehicle carbon monoxide. So that's a pretty significant number. So hopefully, we can get out to more homes here in the county and get all these smoke alarms functioning and address some of the issues with the lack of carbon monoxide detectors in the homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
For those representing Business Appreciation Month, come forward, please. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation, Business Appreciation Month. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges the importance of the businesses located in Citrus County, and the Commissioners wishes to recognize and support the businesses and their employees that provide many of the services needed by citizens of our community. And whereas the businesses in Citrus County provide thousands of jobs that promote the economic success of our community and enhance our high quality of life, including education, recreation, environmental safety, health, and welfare throughout the... through the contributions that the businesses make to Citrus County via the wages they pay to employees and taxes they pay to support Citrus County infrastructure. And whereas the Citrus County Chamber of Commerce is celebrating the month of October 2021 as Business Appreciation Month to recognize the important role and vital contributions that our businesses pay in Citrus County. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Business Appreciation Month in Citrus County, Florida, encourages all residents, together with the Chamber of Commerce, for the celebration to recognize our business community for their contributions to Citrus County, signed by all five county commissioners.
Well, thank you, once again, for proclaiming October as Business Appreciation Month. This has happened now... Oh goodness, I've been with the Chamber 10 years, and it's been going on a while, so this is really special to us. And it means a lot to us to have this recognized by Citrus County. In the Chamber world, now we affectionately call this BAM. This is BAM Month. And boy, do we have some events coming up. And it's all about recognizing the contributions that businesses play in our economy, our everyday quality of life, the jobs that they provide to our residents, and just making Citrus County a better place to live, the taxes that they pay. So along with that, we have a number of events that we have that are public events. And I just want to say a couple of words. One is coming up this Friday is our Salute to Business Luncheon. It's at the College of Central Florida. Senate President Wilton Simpson is our speaker, and I think most of you are coming to it, I hope. It's always a wonderful event. We're even getting a special video introduction from U.S. Senator Rubio. He can't be here, of course, but he has sent us a special appreciation. We still have a few seats left, so anyone that may be interested, please call the Chamber at 352-795-3149 as soon as you can. And then coming up on Tuesday, a week from today, is Fire Up Citrus. Happens to be one of my favorite events. This is where we reach out to the community, to our businesses, and ask them to submit to us what they think is the next best big idea for Citrus County. Those that are chosen, we choose 12, have the opportunity to present their idea in five minutes flat, accompanied by a slideshow, 20 images that automatically advance every 15 seconds. So as we say, it's something that is fast, curious, and fun. There was no judgment during this event, but a lot of the ideas that have been first presented at Fire Up Citrus have actually taken root and are growing. There may be operating and growing businesses. They may be ideas that are in the works. Everything from the Construction Academy, which keep hearing about it again and again and again in the newspaper, Justin Muse Me in the mall, the Wright Run of Aviation started their $5,000 pathway to being a private pilot. Even Dr. Desai, whose veterans village that the Commission is supporting with the land and everything, started first at Fire Up Citrus. It will be this Tuesday evening at the Valerie Theater. Six o'clock starts a reception. The event starts promptly at 6:30. It is over by nine o'clock, and it comes with a little refreshment, a reception. And there are opportunities in between the various presentations, groups of presentations, for you to mix and mingle with the presenter, see if there's something you're interested in. $10 for admission. Tickets are available on Eventbrite, or again, you can call the Chamber at 352-795-3149. And then the last thing is the Big Bam BBQ at M&amp;B Dairy on October 28th. Always one of the best parties and best events in town. Big networking event hosted by Leon and Dale McClellan, food by the Citrus County Ad Alliance. Lots and lots of fun. We have ice cream that's made from the cream of the M&amp;B Dairy cows. Larry Rooks does his fried okra. Dixie Hahn's does his fried green tomatoes. And we have a great entertainer this year, Vegas McGraw, who is coming to us from Las Vegas, right? And we can announce that he is coming to us fresh from a new Battle of the Bands type show that's produced by Jimmy Kimmel called...
Clash of the Cover Bands.
Clash of the Cover Bands, thank you. Tickets for that are $30, and it includes all the food that you can eat, all the entertainment. It's a lot of great time, and we encourage you to come. Again, tickets are available for that on Eventbrite. So thank you so much, and we really appreciate our Commission and all the work that our businesses do for us in Citrus County. Thank you.
Those individuals representing Florida Native Plant Month, come forward, please. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation, Florida Native Plant Month. Whereas Florida native plants are critical to the health of bees, insects, butterflies, and other animals by providing food and shelter, many native plants are endangered or threaten species and must be protected. And whereas the mission of the Florida Native Plant Society is the preservation, conservation, and restoration of the native plant and native plant communities of Florida. The Florida Native Plant Society has been at the forefront since its founding in the summer of 1980 in Winter Park, Florida, of the movement to save Florida native plants. And whereas the Florida Native Plant Society was founded by a group of scientists, educators, conservationists concerned about the loss of Florida native plants and the introduction of non-native species overtaking natural areas. And whereas the society now consists of 33 chapters, 5,256 members from all walks of life who volunteer their time, knowledge, and skills in public workshops, participating in land management reviews, restoration projects, workdays, and teaching Floridians about the many benefits of native plants. Florida has an incredible wealth of natural areas to showcase our native plants and the native plant community to our citizens and visitors alike. These natural communities must be preserved for our future generation. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Florida Native Plant Month in Citrus County, signed by all five county commissioners.
On behalf of the chapter, I'd like to extend our thanks to the Commission for making the proclamation. The Florida Native Plant Society has been using this as an awareness campaign for several years, and we've been fortunate to have you guys help us out on that. The chapter does many different projects, from grants for public gardens to plant rescues, invasive plant removals. I myself just walked in off of a plant survey that we were doing this morning at the Woodcouchi State Forest. So I would like to just thank you again for recognizing the value of the native plants in Citrus County.
For those individuals representing domestic violence awareness month, come forward, please. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a crime that threatens the safety and lives of hundreds of Citrus County residents every year, and domestic violence is a pattern of behaviors that individuals use against their intimate partners or former partners to establish power and control. And whereas while the state of Florida is recognized nationally as a leader in the creation of groundbreaking domestic violence programs, policies, and services to survivors and their children, it remains a serious societal concern, and the 2020 Florida Department of Law Enforcement Uniform Crime Report reflects 833 domestic violent crimes in Citrus County. And whereas three individuals died as a result of domestic violence murder in 2020 in Citrus County, in the fiscal year 2021, CASA, Citrus County Certified Domestic Violence Center, provided emergency shelter to survivors of domestic violence and their children, totaling 5,906 nights in shelter, and provided services to 147 survivors and their children through shelter and outreach. And whereas advocates of CASA, Citrus County Certified Domestic Violence Center, provided 1,166 safety pens, responded to 711 crisis hotlines, provided 5,568 community referrals for assistance, and provided violence prevention education to 188 youth in Citrus County. And whereas partnerships between local agencies, nonprofit and private organizations, law enforcement, and the courts, healthcare, and legal providers, faith-based communities, educational institutions, create a coordinated, efficient, and cost-effective system of services for survivors and their children. And whereas these partnerships and collaboration work collectively and creatively help to provide safety and resources to survivors, preventing initial acts of intimate partner violence and whole perpetrators accountable. And now therefore, be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby recognize October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourages all Citrus County citizens to work collectively to promote health and peaceful relationships and prevent domestic violence, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you very much. I just briefly, on behalf of survivors, I'd like to plant a seed in our Commissioners and those that are here and our citizens. COVID-19 has had a unique impact on victims of domestic violence, and by extension, the work that we're doing to address the problem of domestic violence. Today, I ask you to look through a new window for which to view domestic violence, and continuing need for domestic violence to be recognized for what it is. It is a community issue. It is not one that is to remain locked behind the doors of a single home. Domestic violence in one home affects all of us. What if we treated domestic violence as a public health crisis? What if we approached it every day like we are collectively approaching COVID-19? What if we had a plan for emergency response and developed models to flatten the curve by addressing the needs of the programs? Look for ways to improve the response at the systems which respond to the survivors. If we are to achieve a society that has mostly eliminated domestic violence, we must have a long-term systemic and capacity-building discussion acknowledging this public health crisis. This will take a great amount of effort, but we know until we do that work, all we will be able to do is continue to offer bandages to victims without looking towards a kind of resolution or solution for us all in the community. I thank all those who have already joined CASA's efforts to raise awareness in the community of domestic violence. I invite all of you who have not considered what part you might play in ending the silence that has too long allowed the violence in our community to continue. Please join us in wearing purple on October 21st to show your support for survivors. And again, on behalf of all of our survivors, I thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to go to open the public. Before that, Commissioner Davis has an announcement she would like to make before we go to open the public.
Okay, we have two town halls coming up, October 16th and 23rd. They are to set the vision for the county. We are inviting all residents to please RSVP and get out a pen and paper, because I'll start reading that out in a moment. It's a pretty short website address. But we would love to have you join us for one of the two Saturdays. They're identical, so you only need to pick one. It's 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., October 16th and October 23rd. That's a Saturday. Hopefully, before any important football games start on Saturday. It is going to be Zoom, so you can do it at home, or you can go to one of three Citrus County libraries, the one in Inverness, the one in Central Ridge, and the one in Homosassa. There will likely be a Commissioner at each of those locations, and Commissioners have been officially muzzled for this. You'll be happy to know. We don't actually get to speak at all, but we want to listen to what our residents want. Without further ado, that is citrusbocc.com/townhall. One word, Town Hall. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, ma'am. All right, with that, we'll go open to the public. If anybody wants to come speak to the board, the podium is open. You'll have three minutes. If you have a letter on file, you have five minutes. So please come on up. Anybody want to speak to the board? Now, this is unusual.
Yeah.
This is a good day. All right, we're going to go once, twice. Okay, we're going to go ahead, close, open the cover. Wow, yeah, right, right. All right, with that, E1.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve item E1A through F.
Okay, we've got a motion, E1A through F.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comments on bids, A through F? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes five, zero. E2?
Yes, approve budget transfers for visitor and convention bureau of fire hazardous materials and solid waste for fiscal year 2021.
Chair, move approval of E2.
Motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comments on E2? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. E3?
E3, adopt and authorize Chairman to execute a resolution amending Pine Ridge Road Maintenance Fund and the general fund budgets for fiscal year 2021. B, adopt and authorize the Chairman to execute a resolution adopting Woodcouchi Regional Water Supply Authority Inverness Airport obstruction clearing and aquatic plant control grant budgets for fiscal year 2122.
Okay.
Chair, move approval of E3.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comments on E3? E3. Seeing none, we'll close that. Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes.
Can I please request clarification of that motion? Is that A and B?
A and B?
I normally am careful about that. My apologies.
Thank you.
E3, A and B.
Yes, A and B. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes five, zero. E4?
Yes, authorize the Chairman to execute a separation agreement, general release between Citrus County and Jeffrey Reagan as full and final settlement of any and all claims against Citrus County. We'd ask for approval.
Okay. Motion to approve item E4. Motion by Commissioner Kennard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment on E4? Any public comment on E4? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes five, zero. E5?
Yes, E5 is approval of an interlocal agreement with the City of Inverness regarding water and wastewater. It defines who's going to serve what particular areas. And I'd like to... Ken Cheek negotiated this on our behalf, and Eric Williams on the City of Inverness's behalf, and I think it represents the best interest of both parties, and I would ask your approval of this agreement.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve item E5, and thank you to everyone involved in getting this done.
This has been a long time coming forward, and this is a great agreement.
Yep.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes five, zero.
Yes, E6, approve and authorize the Chairman to execute the agreement to begin on the project with work performed by American Infrastructure Development. This is the DEO grant agreement for the Inverness Airport.
Okay.
Motion to approve E6.
Motion by Commissioner Davis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment on E6? Any public comments? Seeing none, Commissioners? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes five, zero. E7?
Yes, E7 is the renewal of a lease...
They have office space about almost 300 square feet in Lakano, a government complex, and we're asking for renewal of that lease. It's 2,047.68 per year. It's for five years, and we'd ask for approval for A, B, and C.
Okay.
Move to approve E7, A, B, and C.
Okay, my Commissioner Davis. Second. Second by Commissioner Canard. We just got it going on today. Is there any public comments?
Such enthusiasm.
Yeah, any public comments? Seeing, uh, commissioners, all those in favor? Aye. Pose. Motion passes 5-0. E8.
E8's authorize chairman to execute continuation certificate for Harko National Insurance Surety Bond, extending the period to September 30, 2022, and to be made part of the solid waste, uh, Southeast LLC's Waste Disposal Account Agreement dated October 13th, 2020. For the benefit of the public, what this does is protect the county in case a vendor doesn't pay their monthly disposal bill.
Your turn, Ron.
I know, I'm just listening.
Move approval item, uh, E8.
Commissioner Kitchen makes a motion. Commissioner Canard's still at the second, so, uh, is there any public comments on E8? Any public comments? Seeing, uh, commissioners, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. E9.
Yes, E9, approve and authorize the chairman to sign all the appropriate signature pages of the contract amendment. There's no cash match required. This is for the HE cares contract.
Okay.
Move approval of E9.
Motion by Commissioner Davis. Second. Second by Commissioner. We're gonna give that one to Commissioner Slayball. She jumped in there. So, Commissioner Slayball, we got a second from her. All right, with that, is there any public comments on E9? E9. Seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor? Aye. Pose. Motion passes 5-0. E10.
Yes, E10, authorize the chairman to execute an amended agreement between United Way and Citrus County for the remaining funds and extends the time for performance.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pass E10.
Motion by Commissioner Slayball? I'll second it. Any public comments on E10? Any public comments on E10? Seeing none, we'll close it. Commissioners, any comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Kitchen.
You know, I know why we did this, and you know my feelings, Mr. Chair, on all these from the beginning, but I guess the thing that really concerns me now is when it's all started, it was emergency, it was emergency, get the money out to the community right away. They need it right away, and now we're talking about it through August 2022. So, as I said before, I'll be, I'll be the happiest person when all this COVID money is gone and out of here, and we don't have to deal with it, but I'm still having a hard time processing how extending something that's gonna take until 2022 of August is an emergency. So, uh, you know, I mean, that's my, that's my question about all this. I mean, in the very beginning, I think everybody more or less was in favor of government shut businesses down, it affected people, let's get this COVID money out as fast as we can. We were all united about that, and now it's turned into a bunch of government programs and a bunch of make-work issues as far as I'm concerned. And, um, so, anyway, I've had my say, I know how I always end up on these votes, but I just have to reiterate, what we started off thinking was a good idea has turned into just, I'll use the word that my friend once used before, a scam.
Scheme.
And, and, yeah, scheme, and not, and not so much against United Way, because United Way does good stuff, but again, we come back to, if this was the crucial emergency, why wasn't the 450,000 spent by now? You know, I mean, that's the thing that gets me, is that if it takes year after year after year to get this money out, so, anyway, that's my song and dance on it.
Yeah, not, not to be argumentative, but ju, but just, just to respond to, um, a couple things. I think we, we extended this out so far so that it didn't keep coming back to us every two or three months. And, um, you know, there, there was, there was an emergency to try and, or an urgency to try and get this money out quickly, and I remember, um, not arguing, I'll say debating at that point, that nobody knew what the end of this looks like, and we still don't know what the end of this looks like. But at the time that we were going through all of this COVID stuff last year, a, as things started to clear up early or late spring, early summer this year, I think many, many people, not just locally here, but around the country and possibly around the world, felt like we were coming out of the cloud that was COVID, and then late July hit, August hit, and we have a lot more sick people, a lot more hospitalized people, a lot more folks struggling to pay their bills, things like that. And, uh, so, so I think they're, you know, being, being a bit, um, pragmatic, I guess, with how this, you know, looking at how this money gets out there, um, the, I don't, I don't think at all that United Way is gonna take until that, that time next year to get rid of all this money. I think the last 150, they got rid of in three or four months, uh, got it out there to, to groups that qualified or individuals that qualified. So, um, I, I understand the concern and some valid points there, uh, but I think they're doing the stuff, uh, they're doing the stuff that we asked them to do with it so that, um, they can help folks in our community. I'm looking forward to supporting it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Due to my colleague's eloquent explanation of his standing on that, I'll go ahead and support it one, one final time.
All right, and here, and that one, one, one good, uh, there is some good news coming out of Citrus County. The COVID cases are going down dramatically like they are going around the country. The hospitals are seeing fewer and fewer cases, so that, that's a plus, and, um, so I think we've actually suspended our calls now, Randy, haven't we? I think they did last, yeah, the last call. They suspended the weekly calls, so, again, we're seeing the trend going in a positive direction in the county, and knock on wood, hopefully, we have seen a turn in the corner. So with that, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion passes 5-0. E11.
Uh, thanks to the keen work of the county attorney on the chamber thing, we don't need to amend the contract, we only need to authorize the, uh, the contract provided for two payments of 50,000, one to cover the first six months, one to cover the next. So all we need to ask you all to do is authorize, if that was subject to, uh, successful performances, authorize 50,000.
No, we're, you're doing E12 right now, correct? Or you?
Oh, I am sorry.
Listen, well, let's go ahead and do E12, since you already read it.
I'm sorry, as a head myself.
All right, so this is for the core group.
He can compliment the county attorney again.
I'll, I'll rerun that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so with that, we're on E12, and we'll jump back to E11 here in a second. So, E12. Motion approved, item E12. I'll, I'll second that.
Second.
Is there any public comment on E12?
Mr. Chairman, only for clarification, Josh Wheaton, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, um, E12 says 30,000. I think that may.
It's 50, yeah.
It may just been mixed up with the other items.
Right, yeah, it was 50.
Additional.
It's 50. Yeah, there's a different, there's an additional.
Okay, you have that.
We do, we do, yeah, yeah, we're good. All right, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, commissioners, any comments?
Yes, sir. I won't, I'm not gonna support this for the same reason I did in the first time. Again, seems that most of the money went for buildings, renovation, uh, expanding, uh, this and not for the money that I think it was intended for, so I can't support it.
All right. Any other comments, commissioners? All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Aye. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, oppose. We got, so it passes 4-1. E11.
Okay, E11 just moved $30,000 from the chamber. If you remember, you gave them a grant to reemploy workers. That didn't go as well as they thought it might, and so we're taking $30,000 from, uh, there based on the chamber's recommendation and giving it to the YMCA for childcare for working parents.
Okay.
Move to approve E11.
Motion by Commissioner Davis. Second. Second by Commissioner Canard. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? You should've just stayed at the podium.
Well, we appreciate this consideration, but just to crack the record, the previous comments on 12.
All right, we're on 11.
Okay, but that money did not go towards building renovation.
All right, we're on 11, though. All right. So with that being said, any public comments on E11? Seeing none, commissioners, any comments on E11? All those in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
I want to refer to additional item E12.
Okay.
Okay, I'm getting tired of being contradicted by people of special interest coming up here. The signed agreement on May 22nd stated the payments were to be semi-annual. However, the chamber is facing deleted funds due to additional overhead and renovations and startup costs. Okay? So I deal with the facts, put an evidence in front of me, all right? So I don't make this stuff up, so just so the record is clear.
I understand. F, outstanding items.
There's no change. There were a couple items on there this week, but we'll change those in the next meeting.
Actually, there's nothing we can do on those, all right? So, G.
Yes. Wait a minute. What do you mean, we're not, we're not covering F? No?
There's no changes.
Oh, um, what about the accessory dwelling unit? I thought we were supposed to be looking at an ordinance on that.
I, I agree with that. I don't know.
I think that already was done.
Then we need to eliminate that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I think he said, I think he said there were some things we had to work on in here, but that was.
I don't, I don't believe it's ever come back in front of us.
Let me check on that. I'll check on that.
No, it hasn't.
It has not come back in front of us, I know that.
I know it was passed by the.
It was either has or it's on today.
I'll find out.
It's not on today.
With the ear-based?
Okay.
I'll find out.
I'm pretty sure we did.
Okay, so it's gone through maybe the PDC?
If we could have a status on that, that would be great by the next meeting.
All right, G1.
Yes, G1, uh, as you recall, uh, there was a median landscape down there for Oak Village at Sugar Mill Woods. Uh, the membership, or the HOA Association was involved. There was backup in your packet that said they approved the design, DOT approved the design. It was installed as spec, uh, DOT and the county sounded off on it. Mr. Eastman's here to answer any particular questions. You've got, uh, the membership, as I understand it, changed for that HOA, and the current membership does not want to maintain it, and we're basically asking you, do you want us to rip it out and plant it back in grass? Uh, do you want us to, uh, or take another course of action? It's up to you all.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Kitchen.
Sir, I feel a need to step out here, because I feel kinda responsible for this, where this is the second time we've gone down this road. Just a little refresher for everybody, um, only, only the homeowners association of, um, Oak Village asked for this, not the other HOAs in Sugar Mill. That HOA at the time went to the county and asked them to apply for this FDOT grant so that, uh, because the county had to facilitate or, you know, take care of the grant, even though the money was coming from FDOT. And the problem was, is the perpetual maintenance that was gonna be required. So the county, probably in his wisdom, and I say the county, I refer to Randy, uh, said no. And, and so then the HOA kinda came to me and said, well, listen, we're a perpetual HOA, we're here forever, okay? So if we agree, if we sign an agreement with the county that we'll take care of this forever, why wouldn't a county agree to do it? Because it's not costing the taxpayers anything, and we're gonna take care of all the maintenance. And I said, that's a good argument. So at that time, I came back to this board, I don't think Commissioner Davis or Commissioner Slayball was on the board at that time, and I think you, you folks will remember, I said, hey, these guys are gonna be there forever, they're a perpetual organization, they've signed it, they like it, they want it, they've, they've been pushing this from the very beginning, so the board voted to move forward with it. So I cannot sit here in good conscience and say, A, that we're gonna plow it under, because that's $300,000 of Florida taxpayer money that would be shot. That's also a slap in the face to Citrus County, because I think we'd lose some credibility with FDOT when we went to them, and they said, oh, yeah, and by the way, what happened to that other 350,000 we gave you? So at this point in time, and the other thing I must say, I think the best thing that could happen is the HOA needs to live by their signed agreement and take care of it. Uh, I keep hearing this $37,000 annual figure thrown out. I don't think it would take volunteers $37,000 to go out and pull a few weeds every now and then, especially during the height of the growing season. But I absolutely will, will not support the county taxpayers in, in totality paying for this in any way. So in my mind, either the HOA needs to step up, agree to their agreement, or we need to put an MSBU on the Oak Village Homeowners Association to pay for it, because they're the ones that asked for it, they're the ones that agreed to it. Ladies and gentlemen, we, we didn't force this on them, we didn't, we actually said no, okay? So it was after, this, this, the history I just gave you is how we got here, and it's not just Sugar Mill Woods. I don't think it's right to put the burden of this on the other homeowners association residents, okay? So, um, perhaps the people of the HOA now in Oak Village are not happy with the agreement. We know what that's like to step into agreements that you're not happy with, but that's the agreement that the previous group entered into. So, you know, that's my feeling. Uh, like I said, it's my district, I meet with these folks in the area down there monthly, and, um, so I'm just saying, I, I, not only is it not fair for the county to pay for this for the people in Floral City and Red Level and Crystal River, but it's not fair for the people of Cypress Village, Southern Woods, and, and anyplace else to do it. So, so I think that's our two choices, is we go back and we give the HOA one more chance to fulfill their contract obligation, and if they don't, then we start the process to assess an MSBU.
Madam Attorney, uh, question I have for you. I seen a letter that was written by that, uh, homeowners association that pretty much said that if we impose a MSBU on them, that was against the law, and they would fight us tooth and nail. What is your opinion on, uh, with the, with the backup material that we have and all the agreements that were signed? I don't feel that it is, uh, against the law to, to assess the MSBU on them if they will not, uh, resume responsibility of, of the signed documentation.
Well, I guess my question is, who are, who are you?
Oak Village.
Well, the, I, I don't know what property Oak Village owns in order for you to do an MSBU against Oak Village, the corporation.
It would be against the benefit of property owners.
Right, so you're saying, you're not saying you're going to put an MSBU on Oak Village's property, you're going to put an MSBU on the individual property owner's property.
In, in that homeowners association.
So all of the, the home, property owners within Oak Village, you want to do an MSBU against their property to pay for? I, I'm not sure how that benefits their property. So all of the, the home, property owners within Oak Village, you want to do an MSBU against their property to pay for? I'm not sure how that benefits their property. Remember, an MSBU, you have to show that it benefits the property. That's the issue that we had with the hospital, and the MSBU that we had with the hospital at the last meeting, that's, that's what it's always going to come down to, is in order to do an MSBU, you have to show that there's a benefit to the real property. So I'm not, I'm not exactly sure I'd have to research that.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, my answer would be, is because they specifically wanted it at only the entrances to their property, to Oak Village. So therefore, only Oak Village got the benefit of this grant because they were the ones that had their entrance beautified and increased through this grant. So, and again, nobody else but Oak Village came and asked for it, okay? The property owners in Oak Village. So if we, if we can't do that, then I guess the only other option is to sue the HOA. And, and so, but again, we're going to have to come back to where the county, the county as a whole and the taxpayers do not, you know, I am not going to support the county stepping up and picking up this just because somebody doesn't want to live up to what the agreement was. So if we can't, if we can do the, the MSBU, that's one thing. But I think it's going to be six, one and a half dozen the other because the homeowners association, I believe, assess the, all the homeowners a membership fee to pay these kind of things. So if we sue them and they lose, they're going to have to go back to the individual homeowners anyway to make up the settlement or whatever. So that's my, just my thoughts on it.
I think it's the vehicle, which vehicle would be best used to, for the county to be not out the money. And I, I can find a vehicle, but I suspect that probably the best vehicle is to litigate for breach of contract against the homeowners association. And then they would in turn have to assess the homeowners to make up for their legal costs and so forth.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
I was just going to sum up then by, Mr. Chair, by saying that my position is we do either one of the vehicles. A, preference would be have them live up to their contract. B, either the MSBU or the litigation, whichever is the best vehicle. But I won't support funding it, and I won't support tilling it over, so that's where.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
I just have a couple of questions for clarification. How many lots are in Oak Village? Because I keep hearing 3,000, and I think that's all of Sugar Mill.
I, I think that, I think Sugar Mill is more like 5,000 for all of Sugar Mill. Oak Village is a portion of that 3,000. Sounds reasonable.
Is it? Okay.
2,300 comes to mind, but I'd have to look it up.
Okay. I just, I wanted sort of an order of magnitude here. And second question is, one of the biggest problems was it was not viable landscaping after the year? So we were supposed to turn it over in good condition after a year?
It was, it was reworked, and as I say, DOT and our people did it. There were some questions that came up after the fact by people that weren't involved in the original decision from the HOA about whether certain other types of landscaping should have been planted, for example, like palm trees and things like that. But you're not permitted to put those in an impact zone on a highway because if a car runs into it, you could be seriously hurt.
Right, so what is the current status? Is it pretty and nice?
It was when it was completed, but they haven't maintained it.
Okay. So, sorry, everyone, renovations going on. So we...
Are you sure that's not Commissioner Slabow?
Oh, is it?
Go ahead, finish. You got, you have the floor, there were called in Commissioner Canard.
So they, they renov, they, they did it, it was not good after a year, we redid it, and then we put it off on them, but they have not maintained it, correct? So we did, I'm looking for confirmation that we did everything that we were contractually supposed to do. Okay.
Didn't they have a landscape architect that designed it?
Yes, they found, in fact, they went out and found the landscape architect who pointed us to the grant, and we had to do some working around to be able to use that landscape architect. But the landscape architect was picked by them, and she was the one that was able to help secure the grant.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Canard.
Yeah, well, to start with, I want to correct my colleague, Commissioner Kitchen, that you're only one of three up here who voted to support this. So you don't share any more blame than the, than the other two of us up here did. And I believe the vote was unanimous by the five of us at the time because we had assurances that the HOA was going to take care of the maintenance on this. So now that we are past that part of it, so, you know, you know, I've been, I've been, as, as all of us have, I'm sure, struggling on which direction to go with this. Tilling it under, I agree, is not an option. That, that cannot happen. Is there, is there any feeling, do we, certainly we would not sign an agreement like this again in the future without putting some sort of protection on the backside for the county? That if the group requesting the grant does not hold up their end of it, then this is what's going to happen. There would be an MSBU in place to cover it, or there an MSTU, whatever, whatever it might be. Does the county bear any portion of the responsibility for not making sure that we didn't have that in place at this time? Because I think, I think with this contract, like most, most any other contract, or many business contracts, is it's spelled out in the contract how you're going to get divorced before you get married. And in this case, the marriage seemed like it was going to work perfectly, and it didn't. And what we're missing is, okay, if this part isn't held up, what's going to happen in the end? And that, that part we missed. We trusted that they were going to be there and they were going to cover it. So I certainly do not want, and will not support, all of the county taxpayers footing the bill for this entire thing. But is there room there for negotiation with the homeowners to share some degree of responsibility?
Commissioner Slabow.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Kitchen, and I'm sorry, I'm sick, I didn't want to share my germs.
Okay, Commissioner Kitchen?
She did agree or didn't agree?
She agreed, she agreed. Commissioner Kitchen?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to say, I would like to answer Commissioner Canard by saying, no. There's no room here for the county. Our, our contracts are contracts. Our room says, our, what the understanding is, is if you break your contract, we're going to sue you for breach of contract. I mean, that goes without saying. So we wouldn't enter into contracts if we didn't expect people to honor them. So I understand what you're saying, but in this case, you know, if, if we, if that wasn't just a staple of, of law, which I'm sure it is, then nobody would ever enter, enter into a contract. So, so I understand what you're saying, but no, I don't think there's any wiggle room here for the taxpayers to pick up the backside of it. So it seems to me, when you sign a contract, you know that you're expected to fulfill your end of it, so.
Commissioner Davis?
I have a couple of just overarching comments here. And I am not, I'm more in agreement with Commissioner Kitchen here. Number one, this is, we're, it sounds like there's a lot of, and I wasn't on the board, of course, but it sounds like there's some second guessing that maybe we shouldn't have done this as a board, right? I would say that one of the things that a lot of folks don't like about government is bureaucracy. And this should have been a beautiful, as you use the metaphor, marriage. This was a citizen group that wanted to beautify the entrance to their, on a public, you know, on a state road, entrance to their neighborhood. And if we get a bad taste in our mouth from this going south, guess what's going to happen next time another citizen group wants to have a public-private partnership thing? That bad apple is going to spoil it for everyone, which I think is really sad. Next, I would say 37,000 annual maintenance divided by, if it's 2,300 lots, and it could be 3,000, I understand, but I'm using the lower figure to, to max it out, divided by 12 months is $1.34 a month. What is your integrity worth? You know, if I made a deal, I, I stand up for, if I make a deal and I sign a contract, I live up to it, period, full stop, even if it's a lot more than $1.34 a month, and even if I regret it. And then on the flip side of it, property value. I mean, how, you're going to get a property value increase from having that beautiful landscaping outside your neighborhood that is surely worth 16 bucks a year. So I'm not, I'm getting less sympathetic the more I think about this.
Well, I can tell you, I'm not sympathetic at all. They're the ones that come to us, they're the ones that beat the, beat the drum over and over again. They're the ones that wanted it, they're the ones that got it. They're going to pay for it, it's no different than entering into any kind of mortgage. Your payment's due on this time, you got this many great stays. If it's not, if it's not paid, then they're coming after you. So unfortunately, that's what we're going to do also. So with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Well, we got to do a motion first, then you get to do, oh, I'm sorry, you get to say that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my, my motion would be, is that, three parts. A, first part is that we instruct, we have the county attorney instruct the HOA that we want them to fulfill their contractual obligations. We want to give them the opportunity to say, okay, we're going to take care of it, it's going to be taken care of, we're going to follow our contract. That would be the first. If we can do that, great. If we can't do that, then the, then the follow-up would be that either we do two, the litigate it, or three, the MSBU, whichever our attorney believes is the best vehicle to resolve it, if the first one can't be resolved through them taking it over.
Okay, got a motion.
Second?
I'll second that, Madam Attorney.
Might I just, maybe, can we just summarize that as send a demand letter for compliance with the contract?
All right, so, so you're going to...
Yeah, that would be part one. Get it, when I said, I think she summarizes, they send a demand letter to do what you said you're going to fulfill the contract.
So we're good with that. All right, so we got a motion, we got a second. Now we have public comments. So you please come on up, whoever would like to talk, please come on up.
By specifically naming MSBU, are we eliminating any tools maybe that the attorney could use down there?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff. My name's David Quinn, President of Oak Village Association. Ron, thank you. I wasn't around in 2018 when this happened, so I'm glad you were, to tell you the truth. But anyway, the, I didn't even find out about this until a week ago that I was supposed to be here for some reason. But we have feelers out all the time. There are 3,238 lots in Oak Village, just so you know. There's 4,600 in Cypress Village, and just so you know.
Well, we're just talking about your village.
I know, I know, but it's a, it's a big place. Sugar Mill Woods, a big place. The, and I appreciate you taking the time to discuss this. I've, I've emailed Chairman Conahan, told him my June, the June 22 meeting, understood completely what you were saying, but there are a tremendous amount of extenuating circumstances, and I brought those 150 pitches with me again, which you still haven't seen, of a dead three quarters of a mile of the .94 miles. And I presented these, hand carried them to the La Canto Government Building for Mr. Walt Eastman, who was very congenial about the whole thing. And he actually presented it to me, three days after getting these, by telephone conversation, that what would you like, would you like this to go away, David? If we can get the state to agree to plow it under and plant grass and the, and the, and the installer would do the grass? I said, sounds good to me. That happened on June 22 at the meeting, you were presented with that, and of course, you denied it, you, you were adamant about it, as a matter of fact. I understand the contracts, I've read them. I've been heavily involved in this project, finding out information as much as possible firsthand, not secondhand or third. And I, I've read them, the agreement is with the county, not the state, that we have with you, you folks. And I'm just, I'm kind of like a little bit mortified, I'm, I'm kind of up in the air. I can go this way or this, this way. We met on the, on the 15th of July with Mr. Eastman out there, with a group of people, the installer and my vice president. And there was still a lot of damage out there, a lot, a tremendous amount of weeds on the east, far east end of 98700. And I just, I told Walt, when we left, I says, it's got to go before the board. And I sent Walt, I believe I sent him a letter. But anyway, August 19th, the board voted five to one, no way Jose, so.
Five oh?
A five one.
It can be four one?
No, we...
No, his board.
Oh, your board, I'm sorry. Okay, your board, okay, all right. You need to go ahead and wrap it up.
No. But anyway, that's, and this was the reason why. Dead and inundated with weeds, and if you, if you want to, Commissioners all want to see these, my goodness, you got to take a look at what caused us to do this. The residents, I told you this on the 22nd of June, were...
You need to wrap it up.
Okay. What do you want me to do?
I want, are you, you're done?
Yeah.
All right, you can sit down.
Tell me what you want me to do.
You can sit down. This is public comment, so you got to let everybody else talk.
I think that's turned towards us and not towards him, Mr. Chair, so he can't even see the timer.
Yeah. But so, so anyway, all right, you're, all right, next speaker, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, sorry, I didn't understand the proceedings earlier.
That's okay, not a problem.
My first time here. But I am a resident of Oak Village. I don't think there's anybody that's really at fault personally, but it's absolutely horrendous. It looks horrible. I pass there every single day. It's not that the Oak Village residents don't want to support something beautiful. It's not beautiful. The things were all dead shortly after they were planted. I don't know if someone dropped the ball and, and didn't water or didn't do whatever, but the plants died immediately, and it's, it's an eyesore, it's ugly. And why would we want to pay for something that is so ugly? You guys are here representing us as our county commissioners. We're just asking you, we're a small group of people. Oak Village is small in comparison to the county, but you still represent us. It isn't the deal that we don't want to do, it's the ugliness of what we were given. And we need somebody to come there and support us. And if you make it beautiful, I'm sure the residents might want to continue with it, but it's not beautiful, it's not something I want to support. And so we just appreciate you opening your minds a little bit to what's there. Visit the spot, look at the pictures, and if it was your home, you wouldn't support it either. It's not worth supporting. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Chair for Public Record.
I need your name.
Yes.
I need your name and where you live.
James Perata.
And then I also need you to fill a green card out. Next speaker? And if you haven't filled a green card out, please fill one after, after you speak.
Hi, my name is Richard Anderson. I'm a resident of Oak Village, I'm also on the board, the board secretary. I've read all the minutes going back for the last six years, trying to look at how this started and how is it continuing. And it seems like people want it to look nice, but now it's looking worse because people don't want to take responsibility for it, thinking that that will hurt their position going forward. And so it makes it self-fulfilling in many ways because it's becoming weedy, it's well overgrown. I drive by it periodically, there's still plenty of plants in there. And I've talked to a company that does maintenance and knows all about native plants, and, and they feel that it can be maintained to the point that we will be proud of it, which was the whole purpose of having it there in the first place. Just like Oak Village Boulevard, we maintain that even though it's your property. Some of the residents were complaining that we shouldn't be maintaining this because it's not our property. But it is our front door, and it does reflect on us. And it's more than just Oak Village. You know, you, you mentioned, you know, people don't know the difference between Oak Village or Cypress Village or Southern Woods. It's reflecting on Sugar Mill. So, you know, if we could get it looking nice and not be adversarial, I'm not sure how to go about that, but it has to be done in the end. And the longer that it takes before it gets, you know, moving, I think the worse it's, and more expensive it's going to be. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next speaker. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Melody Glassman, and I have a concern that the president that we had that came to you with this agreement, he did not have the right to do that. He only had the right for Oak Village business. He took it upon himself. The members were supposed to be able to vote for this, for anything that cost over a certain amount of money. That was never given to us to make this choice. I only found out about this last year. I had no idea that there was a contract signed. So he overstepped his bounds. There's certain laws that the Florida statutes and our bylaws, and he had no right to do this. He had no right to make a decision that's going to cost the homeowners extra money. So there's techni, there's technicalities along with him taking it upon himself to do this. So that's something else to keep in mind.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak? Anybody else? One, once, twice? All right, we're going to close the public portion of it. Commissioner Davis?
I would like a timeline and/or photos that should have been taken, I would assume, on when it was, when it was done originally, then it was redone, and at what point the communication was to Oak Village that they needed to take over at that moment. We have all that backup, because I'm not, I'm not comfortable voting on this unless I have that backup.
Commissioner Kitchen?
I just want to make sure that we are, we lived up to our side of the bargain, that's it.
Yeah, and I appreciate, Mr. Chair, I appreciate Commissioner Davis's position because I feel the same way, and that's why we went and did all this back work. First of all, Mr. Walt Eastman does not speak for the B O C C. So if he's out there making agreements with homeowners associations, I suggest he check his job description first to see if it, okay? So either he said that or he didn't say that, so we have it on record that he said that. So I, I find that troublesome, that if he did say it, I find it troublesome, and if he didn't say it, I find it troublesome that somebody would stand up here and said that he said it. Okay? But again, that's why these things are up here. The second thing is, those pictures show it at a point in time, but it doesn't show it at the point of takeover. We have documentation that says all the parties met at the point of takeover. There was some questions about certain plants, those plants were replaced, and then takeover was done. Mr. Chair, if you'll give me just one moment.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
I used to be in a golf course business. You build a multimillion dollar golf course, got down to the point where we planted the grass, and then there had to be a point in time where we turned it over to the owner and said, it's now your golf course, okay? And this is what could happen sometimes. You turn it over to them, and there's, and you turn it over to them at 5 o'clock that afternoon, and at 12 o'clock that night, there's a huge thunderstorm, and two of the golf holes get washed out. Who's responsible for it? The owner, because we had turned over the golf course to the owner. At the point in time that the project is turned over, that's when it's turned over. I think what's happened here would be no different than a golf course owner not going out and mowing his golf course for two or three weeks, and then calling up and saying, hey, the golf course looks terrible. When you got, you know, we're not taking this over, you guys gave us a crummy looking golf course. That's why it's essential that everybody understands the point of demarcation is when they take over it, and that's been clearly documented. So I think what's happened is we maybe got into this little, the county said it's yours per agreement, and somebody at the HOA says, well, we don't like it, we're not going to take care of it, and each day it got worse and worse and worse. Also, I heard a couple of things that I found interesting. If it was, if it was pretty, we might think about taking it over. That doesn't tell me that that's a solid agreement to honor the contract, even in that statement. So, so, so here's where I think we are, is that it's in the HOA's benefit to get it looking good as soon as possible, because the maintenance on it is only going to be better and easier to perform once it is put into the condition it's supposed to be put into. But this happens a lot, I mean, in these kind of, in these kind of projects. I'm not saying that this, I'm just using this as an analogy, but there has to be a point in time when it's, the project is turned over to somebody for what we used to call grow in. You know, you can't, the, and again, keep in mind, this architect was selected, okay? The plants were selected by the architect, the architect was selected by Oak Village. So, and I understand what the folks have gotten into there. The president walked into a situation that he had no clue about. The homeowners, maybe they knew, maybe they didn't, but, but we're not in that contractual obligation there. I mean, we, we have to assume when somebody comes up here and says, I'm the president of so-and-so homeowner's association, they're, they have authority to speak on that, on that situation. I'm sure you gave him five minutes when he came up to speak because he said he was the president of the homeowner's association.
We got a letter on file.
Yeah, exactly. So, so again, it just seems in my mind, we can sit here and we can argue, and we can argue, and every day it's going to deteriorate and it's going to look worse. And I, for one, folks, I feel, and I said this before, had we just said no and been hardcore about this in the beginning, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. But instead, we tried to do a private, you know, public partnership. I'm a little confused by the watering because I thought the watering responsibility was Oak Village's as well. I mean, I thought, you know, because I knew we weren't going to go out there every day with a watering truck and, you know, and water these plants or whatever. So in my mind, after going back and reviewing this and relying on my memory on this, I think the county has gone out and beyond what we did. And I appreciate Commissioner Kennard saying, I didn't do this, but I was the one that came back and twisted your arm. So I was the one that said, come on, come on, let's look at this. So, anyway, that's my feeling, Mr. Chair. I mean, I feel for the folks down there. They're in a situation through no fault of their own, but we can't put the rest of the taxpayers on the hook because folks down there maybe did or didn't know what their group was doing.
And I appreciate those comments. And the last, the last thing I'm going to add is what we can't put on the hook either is the county's reputation on getting these grants and not following through, because others through the county, you know, might want to apply for these grants. And if we just till this under, we're not going to look very good. And I promise you this, that Citrus County won't be seeing any more of those grants. So unfortunately, they entered into it, they need to, they have a contract obligation that they need to fulfill. I understand you guys walked into it, but unfortunately, your homeowner's association did get into that. So commissioners, any other comments? Mr. Schleball, any comment?
I'll go to Schleball first if she wants to say something.
No, sir. I just have to follow the lead of you three gentlemen because you were on the board when this decision was made.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis.
I, I really, really, really want to follow the lead here because I agree with everything that y'all have said, 100%. My only sticking point is that in all of the backup that we were given, there is no handoff document with photos. And this was already a contentious issue when the first round of landscaping was, died immediately or whatever, and then it redid it. Why do we not have photos with a handoff document?
We do have photos.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I understand what you're saying, but I guarantee you-
But they haven't been presented to me, and I have to make a vote-
I understand.
-on something that I've just been told exists.
No, 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 and I can appreciate that, but I'm going to go with our staff. Okay? Because I, I know our staff, and I know that this has been a contingent, a hot subject, and I can guarantee you they covered all their, dotted all their i's and crossed their t's. So it's a very easy event for me. Commissioner Schleball?
I, I do want to say something, and I appreciate Commissioner Davis bringing this up. I, I also have not seen the documentation of any, of a completed project. The last I heard was the contractor was going to fix some of the problems. So I too am torn because I understand what Commissioner Kitchen went through to get this done, and it was, it was an honorable, you know, public-private adventure. So, venture. So I'm sick, so I'm, again, I have to now, I'm on the fence. They say they have the documentation, but I don't see it. All right, is that okay, Chair? Did I say something funny?
Again, you know, you got to take your position on where you want to vote, but here's what I can tell you. We have a damn good staff here at this county, and when it comes to public work, engineering, Walt Eastman, okay, and I can almost guarantee you, their homework was done, their i's were dotted, their t's were crossed, and when this was handed over to the homeowner's association, everybody agreed upon it. And we, Mr. Eastman's here, if you would like to have Mr. Eastman come up and ask some questions, we can do that.
Chair, is there any way that we could get that documentation before the end of this meeting? Or we can table it for the next one?
We're fixing to have the vote. I'm not going to push this off because, you know, again, we, I don't have any issues with documentation because I feel that we, here's what I can tell you. We've got an attorney sitting here saying that we'll go to court, so I guarantee our documentation's in line. So I'm going to, I'm going to call the vote here shortly. Commissioner Kennard?
Well, I've got to tell you, I was prepared to vote with you on this, but I'm, I'm not 100% convinced that we have that documentation. And what you just said was, you're almost, you're almost convinced, you're almost positive, but we don't have it. That, that seems like, you know, if that is, if that has been their ongoing issue, that I didn't see it after, after it was repaired out there. I did see it when it was first done, and it was stunningly beautiful, but then I saw it as things started to die out there. Now, if, if there has been an agreement at some point where, where the HOA said, yes, this is what the deal was, this is what we agreed on, then that, that agreement, that paperwork, there should be something to say, you know, like what Commissioner Kitchen said. When they would hand over a golf course, surely there was something signed saying, we take ownership over it. If it gets washed out tonight, then it's on us. That's, that's not typically a, yep, I agree, phone call, and everybody's good.
Actually, if I may answer that, what we did is, it was in the olden days, we sent a fax. And we said, when you receive this fax, it's your golf course, unless you fax this back and tell us it's not. Because we did a walkthrough that day. And my only question is on this, was there a walkthrough? And was the walkthrough with the previous board or the current board?
It was-
And that's, you see what I'm saying here? So that, that's what we, there was a walkthrough done, and at the time of the walkthrough, either everybody accepted it or they did not. And to me, that's the bottom line. At the walkthrough, if everybody said, that plant needs to be replaced, okay, we replaced that plant and that's it, then that time there was acceptance. That's the way I-
All right, so without, go ahead.
Do we, I, I don't know, I mean, where I'm at right now is that I don't know that we, we have something stating that that happened and everybody agreed on it. And I, my recollection is what Commissioner Schleball related, is the last that I remember hearing was that the contractor had agreed to go out there and repair it, but I don't know that heard anything after that. Now, if, if we don't have evidence of, yes, this happened and, yes, they agreed upon it, rather than, rather than calling a vote and it potentially failing, why not table it until that can be produced and then we got a five-year vote?
Well, that's why I have Mr. Eastman here. I'd like to hear what Mr. Eastman says, and if we, if we need to table it, we will. But he was the one out there, so Mr. Eastman, the floor is yours. So you've heard, you've heard this concern, you've heard the questions, and we'll let you do the answering.
Yeah, Walt Eastman, Citrus County Engineering. There was a walkthrough. DOT did approve the plans, did approve the project, and the plants were installed, inspected, and it went into a growing period. During that time, it was under the care of the contractor, Mrs. Weeks. And at the end of her maintenance period, we did do a walkthrough. It was conveyed not via fax but via email. I believe it was July 15th, if I recall. I sent the email to Mr. Quinn. I met with Mr. Quinn out on site and walked through the project. At that time, Ms. Weeks did replace a lot of plants. There was an issue with survivability out there with winter, what have you. She replaced all the plants. There were some issues with other plants that Mr. Quinn agreed that we would not need to replace because what they would do is just install sod in place of the plants. There's some difficulty again with some survivability. The DOT acknowledged that. The shillings, I believe, has some issues, but the ornamental grasses seem to thrive real well. So there was no issue with swapping those plants out. And what Mr. Quinn stated he would do is he would swap out plants or install sod in their place, which again was fine. DOT was okay with that. We were-
Oppose. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, because I do want to be clear about this. In the nutshell, whatever the attorney thinks is the best vehicle to move forward with this, that's what we came down to, right? So I don't want to eliminate anything that would keep us from following through in the board's action.
Demand letter and best, yeah, yeah, okay, got it. So we're good with that. All right, so we got H1. We got H1. We got a public hearing on ordinance pertaining to criminal background checks. Madam Attorney?
Yes, sir. I'm closing all of my open windows.
I still haven't gotten the pictures. I've received them.
Commissioners, you are having a public hearing, and at the conclusion of that hearing, you'll be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision of the state of Florida, adding Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-67 entitled Criminal History Screening Requirements, providing for survivability, providing for inclusion into the code, providing for modifications that may arise from, oh, at public hearings, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing for an effective date. Commissioners, this is an ordinance which will allow the county to perform criminal history screening.
Okay.
May I ask, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We don't do that now, Madam Attorney?
This is a higher level of review that is required of certain of our employees that are in sensitive positions.
All right, so this is just certain positions, correct?
Yes, just certain positions, yes.
I was going to say, okay. Okay, so with that, we'll open it up to the public hearing. Is there anybody to speak for or against? Anybody to speak for or against? One, once, one, twice, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of it. Commissioners, your choices.
Mr. Chair, I believe we're, you're looking for approval of item H1B, which would be approve, adopt the ordinance, and authorize the chairman to execute.
Correct. Second, got a motion by Commissioner Kitchen, second by Commissioner Kennard. Commissioners, is there any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. All right. T1, I wish we could get it. All right, with that, any, nothing, nothing under I. J Committee reports. Commissioners, any committee reports?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Hold on, come, you one second.
I had 4CF and Early Learning Coalition since the last meeting, and I'm glad that we gave more money to the YMCA for childcare because childcare really is in a crisis situation with COVID, and Early Learning Coalition in particular is having a hard time with what rates we pay. Theoretically, there should be some help coming down from above, so we'll see how that works.
Commissioner Schleball, anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kitchen?
Just a quick update. Tomorrow, the TDC meets, but if you've seen the numbers, it looks like we set an all-time record, and we still have a month to go in the collections. So we are up well over $2 million in tax collections. And so again, kudos to the, to the staff over there. Those folks run an awesome, plus, Mr. Alba, we also won a couple of awards, right? We did, we did win an award for that video that starred so handsomely Commissioner Kennard, right, trying to get the-
And that was a national award. That wasn't a state award, that was a national award.
Yeah, for being good advocates trying to sell a project, you know, so. But again, we did that in-house. I think Miles did a lot of that, and that was awesome. I just wanted to touch base with you, a couple of things about the TBRPC yesterday. It was interesting. We had a presentation, which they've been doing some studies about the effects of COVID on the economy. And, and the interesting thing is, is there's still so many little, I don't know what you call, wavelets going through it, you know, when they look at these projections. The one projection said, you know, based on where we are right now, we should be back on the original projection that they had for the state by 2024. So, you know, if you, you know, vision aligned, it went like this, and then COVID did this, but they're thinking, you know, as they look down the road, depending on what else may change in the future, which could virtually be anything, that our economic outlook should be back on track for 2024. And of course, it shows how things are tied, you know, the state's basically tied very heavily to sales tax, and that's based on whether people have money to spend. What I'm going to find interesting to see in these future numbers is they keep talking about unemployment, but then they keep talking about people retiring or resigning and not going back. And then the, the new amount of people that say, well, I'm not going back to work here if you're going to make me do that. So I find it interesting, we have such a tremendous amount of job openings, and yet there's this talk about, you know, unemployment, where the actual rate is actually, I guess, down around four points, something. So, anyway, the overall, because when we asked these questions, there was a bunch of questions we were asking, but the data ended at May. So from, from this May going forward, we don't know what the effects. And they did show where the checks came from the government, you know, the federal government, and they showed the spikes in spending, you know, obviously. So I guess that's good because if the people are spending the money, it comes down. So, so that was interesting, just to let you know. Also, it was pointed out to us that part of the DE, there's a, oh, the opioid settlement litigation, much discussion about that. I'll just give you the general synopsis, and that was, I guess, the Florida Attorney General has entered into a settlement which still has to be approved by a judge, from my understanding, and I'm, I'm not going to go into all the details. But from our, our perspective and other county commissioners, especially from places like Manatee County and Hillsboro County, I didn't know this, but it was said yesterday that Manatee County basically was the epicenter of the opioid issue, and they spent lots and lots of money, you know, on that issue. There was some, there was some concern that, I guess, and again, I'm, unlike Randy, I'm not being precise, I'm throwing out round numbers. But there was concern that, you know, okay, basically, the state's going to keep 50% and 50% are going to come down to the counties one way or another, and there's a certain way only that money can be used. So it's going, and it can't be used for anything that's already been spent. So it can't be used for damages that the county may have suffered. It can only be used for new things going forward. Well, that's great, and I guess, I didn't see it, but the commissioners talked about it, said the, the list of things, new things going forward were all good, whatever, but there is this great concern saying, well, there's probably going to be another round of this. And the next time this goes around, it would be nice if you'd let the counties maybe have a little more flexibility in making themselves whole from the damages that they had to, you know, upfront and pay for. So I just say that to keep in mind when we talk to our legislative delegation that, you know, we appreciate what they've done, we appreciate the work of the Attorney General. It's like anything else, nobody's happy with anything everybody does fully. But it, it did make some sense to say, and in Citrus's case, did we file a separate lawsuit like some of the other counties? Miss Leonard, we just rode with everybody else, right?
No, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I like, I love those answers, no, yes. I just have to remember the order that I asked the questions.
Compound question.
Yes, okay. So anyway, with that said, just, just so you'll be aware that when they start talking about it, were we for it or were we against it, I guess, our position is we have to be for it because that's the, the deal that's in front of us. Has this come back to us in any way where we have to accept it and whatever is it like, don't do anything and you're okay? Maybe you can give us kind of an idea on that.
Thank you. Yes, you signed a, or you offered a resolution a meeting or two ago, I can't remember exactly which, in support of the settlement. We got documentation down. I'm still weeding through it, and I will be coming back to you with further documents where we have to take some more actions. further documents where we have to take some more actions, but yes, we're, we're on track.
Good, so my understanding is, we're pretty much, it, it, is I correct from what we were told, it really comes down to a judge. Everybody can agree to it, but it's gotta get in front of the judge, and the judge has to accept what everybody is agreeing to, right?
I, I believe that at this point, the judge will bless, if you will, the settlement, because everyone is on board. Now it's just a matter of, um, this Attorney General, the attorney that's at the Attorney General's office that is working on this, getting everybody on board, getting all the i's dotted and the t's crossed, but I'm, I'm very comfortable that the judge is gonna sign it.
And I also understand, if I may, this isn't automatic money coming to this, this has to be competitive, right? We have to compete against other counties for this money, for any of these new things we're allowed to do, is that everybody's understanding?
There's a difference with how you're going to get the money based upon your size. There are counties, similar to what we learned with the CARES money, the larger counties are direct recipients, they're getting the money directly because they have already shown their losses that they've experienced, and they are entering into agreements with the sub jurisdictions, any cities, special districts that are in their counties, uh, so that's how larger counties are doing it, smaller counties like us, we do not get it directly, we have to work with our sister counties, if you will, um, and there's going to be a type of administrator over this, and I really don't know all of the details yet, but it, it is different depending on your size. And I know there are those within our community, in our county, that are eyeing that money, and I keep, uh, keep pressing back that we, that we're not, it's not like we're gonna get a lump sum of money.
Right, and there are strings attached, that's the other thing, it can only be used for certain things, uh, and thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to kind of get everybody up to date, because I did find it, A, from a policy perspective, this is what my takeaway was, be nice to the legislature, it may be a deal that we wouldn't have made, but they've made it, and we need to be supportive of what they've done, in order to keep the, and keep the process moving forward, and it may be encourage a little more small county participation, or having direct, some direct say in what happens in the future, because the concept is, everything they're trying to do is good, but every county, to some degree, the larger counties documented their damages, so they're, they in effect are being compensated for their damages, smaller counties, I guess we had still put together an estimate of our damages, did we not, that, isn't that what they used to kind of come up with a number?
I think they had a formula that they applied, but I, I think the difference is, there are some counties, because of the overwhelming problem in their county, have already established programs specifically for that type of harm, um, and there are other counties which can show harm in other areas, like mental health issues, and some other issues like that, where, where we haven't, you know, we can't categorize it as cleanly as being specifically money spent on opioid, but we can show that, that contributed to it.
Well, I just bring this up again, Mr. Chair, because I know particularly Commissioner Canard, uh, has a high keen interest in this subject, I remember him speaking on it many times, but I was also fascinated by the general discussion around the table from all six counties and the other municipalities, about what their experience had been and what they felt about it, and we actually got this presentation from the counsel, the legal counsel for the TBRPC, who I thought reminded me much of our own counsel, because he was asked two specific questions, and he came back and gave a little bit of a background, and then he got through question one, and they started cutting him off, and he goes, and that's in question two, so if you'll let me get the question two. So anyway, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I got.
Yeah, um, just, just real quick, Commissioner Kitchen, I, I imagine that it was, it was part of the discussion, and this, this was honestly, um, one of my concerns during the short period of time that I sat on the four CF, um, board, was that, um, those funds can only be used for new programs or new initiatives, and once those funds are gone, it may, they may be great initiatives, but you can't continue them, there's no money for it, and so ultimately, whatever this settlement amount ends up being, you know, if it's, if it's 38 bucks, or $38,000, or whatever it ends up being to the county, I would, early on, urge great caution in encouraging folks to start new programs with this money, that they're gonna turn right back around to the county and go, hey, look, this, this program costs us X amount of dollars per year to run, and we no longer have the money to run it. I really wish, and, and obviously, the deal's already done at this point, hopefully, if there is a second round of this, the legislature will take that into consideration, that, that there are some very good programs out, that are out there and running, uh, that do deserve, uh, funding to keep them running, and allow them to use it, and I hope, hopefully the four CF, I don't know if they've changed that.
We fixed it.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we fixed it, and...
That's, that's a great fix.
Anything that's, and we, um, expanded just a little bit the definition of what is considered health and medical.
The, um, uh, you know, the state legislature, uh, has made no secret that they did not want to expand Medicaid using federal dollars, because once those federal dollars go away after the first couple of years, then you've got an ongoing funding problem, that's exactly what they set up with stuff like this, when they give you that first year of funding for only new initiatives, and then the funding goes away, so.
And there, and again, Mr. Chair, if I may, there was discussion about that, and that was a, and I guess that's what we always have to keep out there, I mean, I, I know we've had that experience before, like with police officers or law enforcement, the feds would give you money to hire 10 of them, and then the second year, they only gave you 75%, and then 50, and so on, so, yeah.
Nope, I have nothing. Then, uh, I just, I, I'll be with Small County Coalition, I'll be in Tallahassee tomorrow, Thursday, uh, working on, uh, different issues that all small counties are facing, and giving awards out to different, uh, legislators, so. With that, Commissioner Davis, anything?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Canard?
No, sir.
Commissioner Slayball?
No, sir.
Commissioner Kitchen?
Um, oh, yeah, I had something I wanted to share with you here, um, as soon as I found it, I know I stuck it in my book here, um...
Actually, I can say one thing while he's looking for it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I forgot to mention on the town hall this weekend, this Saturday and the following Saturday, because it is a Zoom thing, you pretty much have to RSVP, so please go to citrusbocc.com/townhall.
All right, Commissioner Kitchen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm glad I write these things down, so I knew to dig for it, um, you all get Florida trend, I don't know if you read it or not, but I found a couple of things I just highlighted that I thought I would point out, particularly for the folks watching, um, under economic development, um, population growth of the Tampa-St. Pete Clearwater area from 15 to 20, 2015, 2020, up 6.4%, so that, that's coming up, then right under it was the Big Pharma boom, was the discussion about that. I particularly liked this one, when it talked about tourism, St. Lucie County funded construction of the first portion of an 18-mile segment of the county, in the county, of the East Coast Greenway, a trail running from Maine to Key West, have you guys heard about that? It's gonna run, not across Florida, but all the way from Maine to Key West, and particularly these east coast counties, St. Lucie County is jumping on board right here and funding the first portion of the 18-mile segment, so, also, I talked to a, a mayor of a, of a city south of us, who said, who's also on the east side, or the west side of the county, and said he would love to come up and have some discussions when we get into our trail funding discussion, because they have interest in the, uh, cross Florida coming through them, and perhaps then coming north instead of going south, or what, or, and south, or whatever, so, lots of interest out there in trails, just wanted to point that out, and moving patterns, most popular spots people moved to in 2020, number 25 nationwide was the Tampa-St. Pete area, so, we're continuing to grow, one out of every 11 new jobs created in the United States between 2015 and 2020 was in Florida, that's pretty fascinating, and it, one out of every 11 new jobs, and 1.19 million of adjusted gross income moves into Florida every hour, with the number of people moving here, 330,000 new residents between 20, I know we have a 5:01, Ms. Chad, so I'm gonna...
Oh, but don't worry, we got, hey, I think we got plenty of time, Commissioner Kitchen, I know what's going on till 5:01.
Okay, uh, we have a population, Florida's population grew by 330,000 new residents between April 2020 and April 21, meaning state's population was increasing by roughly 900 people a day, and we've gained more than 1.3 million residents since 2015, growing to more than 21.5 million, and now the new projection is, by 2030, we'll have 26 million people in Florida, and a bunch of them are gonna come to Citrus County, so I know we're gonna be ready. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, with that, I don't have anything, uh, P one, Madam Attorney?
Yes, uh, before I start with P one, I just wanted to let y'all know that the accessory dwelling ordinance was before you on September 14th, and you approved that, so we'll, we'll get the outstanding items, uh, list updated with that.
Mr. Chair?
I'll remember that.
Can, can we get a list of outstanding items that we already dealt with, that we forgot about, and then we can have that?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know you are.
I was just joking, so.
I didn't, all right, so with that, Madam Attorney?
Yes, P one, um, as, as the, the board knows, uh, on October 2nd, at 8:00 AM, we began operations of the, um, emergency medical transportation, um, prior to October 2nd, at 8:00 AM, we were in, uh, swift discussions and operations with Nature Coast EMS, wind, helping them wind down and transition over, over to us and standing up that. We had, uh, heard prior to, uh, 8:00 AM, that there was a potential of the bankruptcy, Ms. Ray came before you at one of your meetings, she mentioned the word, um, and, uh, on Monday, the 4th, uh, at 11:04, I learned that they had filed bankruptcy on Saturday, uh, after we took over operations. About, as of about 4:47 on Friday before the Saturday, we still had two vehicle titles which we, uh, were unable to, um, bring over to our side, uh, we had successfully brought over a lot of things, a lot of contracts, a, a lot of, uh, work had been done, but as of 4:47 Friday, we still had two that we were unable to get over to our side, so, uh, we were concerned on Monday when we learned about the bankruptcy filing and how that would affect the two titles. I'm happy to tell you that as of today, those titles, uh, Chief Stevens did pick up those titles today, uh, so we did get the eight titles that we're still kind of, um, dealing with, but anyway, in, in spite of the bankruptcy. So, on Monday, when I learned of that, I quickly, um, realized that bankruptcy and bankruptcy court is completely outside of my area of having any knowledge whatsoever, and as the week went on, I realized I really knew a lot less than I thought I did. Uh, so I sought, uh, outside counsel for the bankruptcy for you, I, uh, interviewed a couple, uh, attorneys, and I settled on, uh, Mr. Jake Blanchard, uh, he is a small boutique firm, uh, out of, um, I think, um, Largo? And, uh, I spoke with him on the telephone, explained the issues that we were having, both with Nature Coast and with, uh, DAB, because that is another issue that we, uh, are in the bankruptcy court on, and, uh, I asked him to please, uh, submit a letter, and, uh, on your behalf, I did sign that retainer agreement with him and got him right to work, um, he, uh, is charging us $300 an hour, I was, um, quite upset with the $300 an hour, because I, I tend to think maybe I could make some more money on the outside, but anyway, uh, $300 an hour for the work, he did initially request a retainer, I negotiated that down, uh, so that we did not have to pay a retainer, so, um, I am here today asking that you ratify my signature on that agreement, uh, just so you know, we have already attended one hearing, uh, that was on Friday at 1:30, that hearing was probably about, um, half hour or 45 minutes, but prior to the hearing, he had negotiated just about all of our issues with the debtors' council, uh, and really, that hearing was a seamless hearing, the bankruptcy judge was very impressed with the attorneys, that they were able to resolve everything, and basically, it was a matter of a formality, uh, one of the formalities was getting those last two titles, so I was very pleased with the services, uh, so far that Mr. Blanchard has provided to us.
Okay, Commissioners, Commissioner Canard?
Yeah, quick, quick question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote to support this, um, but I was asked if any local bankruptcy attorneys were interviewed or considered for this position?
Uh, I don't know of any local bankruptcy attorneys, and no, I didn't speak with any local bankruptcy attorneys.
All right, Commissioners?
Um, again, you've, you've communicated your words, can you maybe, you probably felt maybe that this attorney could represent us well, um...
Well, I, I mean, I honestly, I don't, I don't know of anybody here that, that, that advertises themselves as bankruptcy lawyers, um...
Well, I'm just thinking that you must had, you know, you probably had...
I got, I got references, um, we had used bankruptcy attorneys in the past, and I had talked to those bankruptcy attorneys, and then I got, uh, um, one of the local lenders' council uses Mr. Blanchard, and I did, uh, send out a request of them, uh, who they used for their bankruptcies, and that's who I, I called, and after discussing with both of them, um, one of the most interesting things about Mr. Blanchard, uh, while I was on the phone with him initially, I got an hour free consultation upfront, he was already texting with the debtor's lawyer and getting me answers to some of the questions that I had, so by the time it came time to actually decide on someone, I felt like that level of collegiality between Mr. Blanchard and the debtors' council would go a long way to getting us a quick resolution.
So they work well together all the time?
They worked well on this one, and what's interesting is, today, when I was on the phone with him, uh, before he went to the hearing for the DAB, uh, one of the other lawyers I talked to was actually gonna be out of town the rest of the week, so I knew that wouldn't work out, because we had this hearing scheduled for Friday, uh, but while I was on the phone with him today talking about DAB, he knows the lawyer out of Tallahassee that's actually representing the surety, which, um, we just, today, did a, an agree, a, a takeover agreement, so it, it is very nice to work with lawyers that have collegial relationships with other lawyers, and so, um, he'll be familiar with the lawyers on that case as well.
Here, here's what, I just want to say one thing, it's, it's very disappointing to me that how Nature Coast went about filing bankruptcy when they stood in front of us on that Tuesday, and pretty much said they're gonna work through everything, they were gonna file bankruptcy, but it was gonna be after a lot of things, uh, happened, and, and, and to go do that on Friday, and to spring that up on, uh, our administration, uh, I, I was extremely disappointed to, to hear that, but, uh, I, I do want to say on a positive note, uh, and I'll, I'll save that for later, we'll go ahead and go with, I need a motion here.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, so we can continue to discuss it if you wish, that we ratified the county attorney's signature on the agreement with Blanchard Law, PA, with the fees not to exceed $8,000.
Okay, got a motion?
Eighty or eighty?
So, I have 8,000.
Eight.
Oh, eight, okay.
Got a motion, got a second by Commissioner Canard, is there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing that, Commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, I, I just wanted, before vote, I just wanted, once again, thank our attorney for being proactive, jumping out there, um, and taking care of this, so that we didn't sit around and say, well, I couldn't do anything, because we didn't have a board meeting, and we lost our standing and all that, so I know sometimes she takes some heat for being too aggressive, but I'm happy she did that, so, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, the, uh, fire has left, but I think there's large kudos are due all around to all the staff for making this happen on a very short timeframe, and it went pretty much flawlessly, so...
In, in a little over two weeks, we took roughly 100 employees on board, uh, it went seamlessly, thanks due to Craig Stevens, the fire chief, and his staff, Denise, Colleen even went down and got titles from the tax collector, uh, she was moving titles around, so it was truly a team effort, and everybody pulled in the same direction, because taking over an organization or an operation like that in two, little over two weeks is a major undertaking.
And last but not least, uh, Public Works.
Public Works did too.
They're keeping those handwatches, uh, running, they're keeping them going, uh, a, a, again, I, that's what I say, I was gonna save my comments, but I just want to say, uh, for a short, uh, amount of time that they had, uh, I don't think any of us has had any emails or phone calls about bad service at this point, uh, I know that, uh, on the COVID calls, uh, that, that, those were all good, so I just want to say, uh, kudos to our administration, kudos to Fire, Public Works, uh, everybody that has been a part of this, uh, I just can't say how, uh, happy I am that, uh, how hard you guys worked, uh, to make this really a, uh, pretty easy, um, transition over in a short period of time, um, there's gonna be...
Don't forget HR either, because HR signed up, everybody did electronically, and...
And that's why, and again, that's why I say all administration, if we're missing anybody, we're, we're sorry, but we, we just want to thank the county in a whole, uh, for getting it done, and listen, and last but not least, the employees that come over from Nature Coast, um, the, we, we appreciate you getting over here, getting to work in, uh, in making it happen, so, uh, we, we want to thank, uh, each and every one of you, I definitely do personally, and I know other Commissioners do, because, believe me, uh, there were some doubters out there, and, uh, you know, I just sat back and laughed at them and said, hey, just wait and see what happens, uh, we, we'll, we'll take care of this, and, uh, this is gonna be, there might be some bumps in the road, but I promise you, it's gonna be a better service, and I think they've already seen that, so, uh, I want to thank everybody.
Do we, Mr. Chair, did we mention the clerk's office too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
And the tax collector too.
Yeah.
Ruthie has something.
All right, uh, Mr. Slayball?
I just wanted to say, um, you, you were pretty, I didn't get a chance, but, um, I'm not disputing who Denise Lynn picked, but, um, Commissioner Canard's question was, was there anybody local, and, and Robert Corcoran is a local bankruptcy attorney, and I just thought that should be said.
And, Mr. Chair? I know Robert Corcoran, known him for many, many years, but I don't know that he's got a texting account with the, uh, same attorneys that, uh, that we're working with, and, uh, again, it's one of those things where, you know, you kind of gotta go with what your call is, so.
Yes, and, and that's what I said, I just thought that should be said, stated, he asked if there was anybody local, doesn't mean you have to pick them, I just wanted that said.
All right, with all that said, all those in favor?
I'll be sure I call Robert also.
Um, I don't think that's necessary, you, you...
No, I, I, I'm, and I, and I'll explain to Robert why I didn't call him, I know Robert very well.
So with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a follow-up question, had nothing to do with the motion, but I didn't want to clutter the motion, and if we don't want to talk about this, tell me, but I heard something today I found very disturbing, uh, I heard that Nature Coast has closed all of its meetings to the public, and it removed our fire chief from their board, is that correct?
Uh, in the meeting that they had... In the meeting that they had, the last board meeting, trying to remember the date, they said at the end of that meeting that they planned to take three actions, that they were going to eliminate the requirement to, for the meetings to be open to the public. They were going to eliminate Chief Stevens as the ex-officio member. There was one other. Do you remember the third one?
Public records, I think.
Yeah, public records, that they were going to pull themselves out from under the public records requirement.
From what I understand, and specifically speaking with the bankruptcy attorney and him speaking with their, the debtor's attorney, they're, the type of bankruptcy that they filed is a bankruptcy to wind down and close up, close out. So, I don't think, pardon me?
Is it Chapter Seven?
No, it's a Chapter Eleven, but there's a sub, it's a new, from what they've told me, it's a new thing. They're kind of thinking they fall within it, but maybe not, and the whole goal is to wind down and dissolve. So, I would say, while it is, I agree that it is disappointing to hear that, because that was part of our contract and it was part of their bylaws, I don't know that they're gonna be around for long. The corporation, the entity.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just wanted that discussed openly because I hadn't heard about it, and I don't like...
I've heard about it.
Yeah, and I don't like hearing about things when, when folks ask me about something like that and I'm not aware of it. So, I, it may be, you know, and again, I may not need to have a no to know about it, but, you know, if somebody brings something up like that at a meeting or something I'm at and they ask about it, and I kind of agree, it really doesn't matter now because, you know, we've broken our relationship with them or left our relationship with them, but it is kind of, you know, you know, it kind of rubs you the wrong way.
Well, again, when their attorney stands up and says, "Hey, we're gonna work through this with you," and, you know, it is gonna be a couple of weeks, and then all of a sudden, it's thrown on them on Monday morning because of hearsay. I agree, that's not very disappointing, but anyway.
And I thought particularly having Chief Stevens removed from their board, I thought that, that if you're gonna try to have a smooth transition and work through this, that would have gone a long way to helping that, so.
The good thing is, I'm just happy that we did take them over because I think we're finding more and more out, that if we'd have probably given the 1.6 million, they'd have still been in the same position they're in today. So, I think that we did ourselves a favor. All right, with that, any other things, Commissioners, before I go open to the public? All right, we'll go to open to the public. Is there anybody here to speak? Come right on up. The podium is yours.
Thank you. I'm just representing myself this time, Athena Phillips, and I, Commissioner Kitchen, you reminded me of something that's been worrying me when you brought up the greenways and the trails, and I have to plead a little bit of ignorance too because I'm not exactly sure how these things get approved, but I've been dealing with the after effects of a couple of different paved trails, and I believe it was Commissioner Conard that I read an article about future trails, and one of them, maybe future down the road, would be through with Gucci State Forest, and that would be beautiful, and it's near me, and I would love to have use of it, but two paved trails that I've been working with, one at the Cross Florida Greenway and one at the Good Nature Trail, Good Neighbor Trail in Brooksville, both were recently paved. Good Neighbor Trail is very similar to what might happen, and with Gucci State Trail, it's a small paved trail goes straight through the forest. The easements were sodded, which is like the exact opposite of what you'd want to do in a well-maintained, very natural forest, and we have been dealing with a lot of invasive species, and just the sod itself is an issue. So, in the future, if that ever comes up, if there's a way to prevent sod, that would be excellent. Gravel and dirt would actually be preferred because the native plants from the side of the trail would just move in, but I'd like to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else speak? Anybody else? One, once, twice? We'll close the public portion. Commissioners, any other comments?
Yes, I expect going forward in the future, that Commissioner Conard will become our trail guru, and when I leave this board in one year, I expect to burn up his emails with my support and encouragement for him to continue and that, so. There's a lot of initiatives out there, and I think the state as a whole is starting to look at this, so again, it's, it really does make a difference. I mean, you go to places that have this kind of, these kind of trails, that's what people want.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
Real quick, while I, you know, I appreciate the credit there, that wasn't one particular trip, that wasn't a trail that I was advocating for. I've got, I'll make it very public, I've got three priority trails. I want to see us have a trail down Fort Island Trail. I want to see Three Sister Springs Trail connected to 486 Trailhead there, and I want to see a trail down Halls River Road. Those are my three big ones that I'll continue to push for as long as the voters keep me here.
Okay. All right, with that, we will recess until 5:01. All right, we're gonna re-adjourn for the 5 o'clock hearings. T1 is the 5:01 PUD 21-05 Local Engineering for Affordable Secure Storage Backyard LLC. Madam Attorney, do we need to do parter?
Yes, sir, we do, and we'll do both of the...
T1, T2?
Yes, sir. With regard to PUD-21-05, and with regard to CPA AA PUD-21-08, have you had any ex parte communications you would like to disclose for the record? And we'll start with Commissioner Davis.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No.
Oh, Commissioner Slayball's not here. Okay, now, with regard to PUD-21-05, this is T1. At the conclusion of this public hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision and state of Florida, meaning the Citrus County Land Development Code Atlas, and an existing master plan of a mini warehouse development, providing for applicability, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Okay.
And I believe Dr. Wilburn is here for the...
Dr. Wilburn.
Welcome. Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Wilburn, Local Engineering, PO Box 938, Floral City, Florida. This is a project that some of you have heard before. I started this project in 2016 for the original client. That client has since sold to Affordable Secure Stores, my current client, and with a different client comes different business plan, different ideas, and so, they wanted to revise the master plan to try and keep things simple. On the second page of the staff report, the existing approved ISR is 64.08 percent. This modification in 2021, as you see it here, would reduce that down to 54.7. So, it's actually a reduction in total ISR. You can see the square facility there is all climate controlled, and that is on top of existing asphalt. This site used to be a MARTA bus parking facility, and so, the, because we're decreasing the ISR, there's no change in retention, there's no change in any calculations, any drainage, any flows, any, there's no, there's no change to any stormwater. We're not requesting any change in buffer, we're just requesting a change in the size and orientations of the buildings that are allowed to be built. That's, that's this project in a nutshell.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Dr. Wilburn?
Mr. Chair, the conditions of approval were 11. You're okay with those 11 conditions of approval? Okay, thanks.
All right. Miranda, how are you? How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good.
Okay, this application's PUD 2105. This is to modify the land use atlas map and to amend and establish plan unit development. Specifically, the applicant is looking to expand the mini warehouse facility. This is an aerial view of the subject property and the surrounding area. Surrounding area is a mixture of commercial and residential land uses and uses. The subject property is approximately five acres and is adjacent to East Noble Bryant Highway. This is the only existing mini warehouse building on the site currently, and the site also has paved RV and boat storage as well as grass RV and boat storage. This is the master plan as submitted by the applicant. As Michael Wilburn said, the red is the proposed mini warehouses that are proposed at approximately 38,000 square feet. This will replace the paved RV and boat storage that were shown in the previous slides. The applicant is also requesting to keep the RV and boat storage along 486. The orange shows the new impervious areas on the property, and on August 5th, the PDC recommended approval with conditions for this proposal.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Miranda? Okay, seeing none. We will go ahead and open it up to a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Anybody here to speak for or against? One, once, one, twice? We'll go ahead and close the public portion of it. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kitchen.
Based on findings of fact and competent and substantial evidence, move that we approve, adopt, and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance for PUD 21 Day 05 and direct the clerk to execute the ordinance, and that includes the 11 conditions.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kitchen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Commissioners, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four zero. T2?
Yes, at the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to adopt two ordinances. An ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision and state of Florida, meaning Citrus County Land Use Atlas Map by redesignating approximately 2.37 acres from the agricultural district with mobile homes allowed to the neighborhood commercial district with the plan unit development, and to amend an existing plan unit development on a total of 11.37 acres for a winery, restaurant, wedding event venue, retail with bakery, cafe, and related uses, providing for conflicts, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearings, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. And also, an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida political subdivision and state of Florida, meaning the Citrus County Future Land Use Map by redesignating approximately 3.37 acres from the agricultural district to the general commercial district, providing for applicability, providing for severability, providing for inclusion, providing for scrivener's errors, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and providing for an effective date. And again, Dr. Wilburn is here for the applicant.
Okay, Doctor.
Okay, as Ms. Lynn stated, you can see on the photo on the left, 2018, it does not extend all the way to the north property line, and so, what we are asking for is an additional 2.37 acres to be added to this PUD, as well as some other changes within the PUD that you have already approved. The reason for the addition is there's currently a market, there's an outdoor pavilion, there's a storage area, there's a little shed that they use for blueberry picking to pay, and none of that is within the PUD, and we are trying to bring the whole site into compliance, and so, we, I've been hired to perform the structural and engineering drawings for those buildings that are outside of the current red outline, and we are almost completely done with that, but before we can submit for permits, we have to go through this process to add those into the facility. As I go through the staff report, there's several deviations on this site. I'm sure Ms. Cattu will address a lot of them. I just wanted to give some clarity and some background to some of them. One issue that was brought up with the PDC is transportation. There's five different comments that the engineering has placed for this permit, for this PUD, that are related to transportation, and we have no issues with complying with those. We are requesting a deviation to allow the existing market parking area, which you see in the bottom left, to remain like a Millings-type gravel and not be paved, and that's the way it is currently. The 2018 PUD was actually approved, allowing similar surfaces that the client just did not utilize. They went ahead and paved anyway, so it's not a deviation that you guys haven't seen or approved before on this site, but that's what we would be requesting to the area in the south, the orange area, yellow area, to the southwest. It's not orange or yellow, it's gold. It's gold. And the buildings, the buildings in red there that you see, those are the, those are the buildings that are currently on-site now that are outside of that PUD. In addition to that, you'll see some purple areas. These areas are in the existing PUD. However, we wanted to outline them for special events, Christmas tree sales, things like that, so that they would be able to utilize those facilities and be in compliance when they do use them. I'm not asking for any deviations in buffers. In 2018, when this permit or this PUD was approved, it was approved with a relief for facade along, I believe, the south portion of the restaurant, which is located in red on the right side of the PowerPoint, and then there's an event hall which is in pink on the northeast side of this PowerPoint. That one doesn't need facade because it's not a metal building, but we are now requesting relief for metal building facade on these three structures as well, or I guess, the way it's written, on structures that are visible from the road, which will be the entire front of the existing restaurant, which is an amendment to the existing PUD, as well as the new structures that we will be permitting on-site. There's a deviation for traffic circulation, but that was also approved in the previous PUD. Parking, so one of the things that's gonna happen as a part of their development is, right now, we have 177 parking spaces, and there's 214 spaces required. However, that is if you took all of the buildings and you had a simultaneous use. So, we, this site has not and will not be a simultaneous use, whereas everything's open at one time, and so, I believe staff was comfortable with allowing that deviation, and we are certainly requesting that deviation. There's, there's a significant amount of reduction that we can get when you consider these, the rectangular building to the north, it's a, it's an outdoor dining, and inside the market is where you order, so there's no eating in there, anything like that, so there's some overlap, and there's some play even with other structures. So, we are requesting a relief for the required parking from 214 down to 177. There is some lighting on the plan that's, that's not in the PUD, but we would comply with the LDC at the time of permitting for that. They are requesting two signs to be at the north end of the property and the south end on 491. There's temporary signs that are now in that same location there on the site plan, but we want to include them in the master plan so that they are able to construct those signs, and I believe that we're requesting a deviation to allow for some directional signs because there is multiple things going on on the site. It is spread out for safety and just for consumers in general. We want to be able to have directional signs so everybody knows where they're going and what they're doing when they're on-site. And we get to propose finding of fact, so the, all the conditions that are on the staff report were discussed with the PDC, and we're perfectly fine with accepting, and it should be worth noting that the staff report says the permits are still pending. Those permits are ready to be picked up. They have been ready for probably about two weeks now, I would say, maybe a little longer, and there was a stalemate, there was a stall moratorium from the client because of some impact fee issues that they were concerned about. I spoke with the client yesterday, and they informed me that they are in fact gonna move forward with the project, pay the fees, and get their permits, and resolve the issues on the existing PUD, which will also allow us to submit and get going on if, should you guys approve this amendment, the current buildings that are shown in red.
All right, so Mike, I got a quick question for you. So, you're talking about the, you know, so the permits that he, for the buildings that he didn't get, he is going to pay for those, and he's gonna pay double?
Yes.
For the building fees, okay.
So, I took on this job about a year ago from other design professionals.
Correct.
Wasn't involved in the earlier process, and so, one of my tasks was to get those buildings structurally sound, to get those buildings approved for the site and the building. So, that has happened now. They just haven't picked them up yet.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I don't know if it's for the applicant or staff, maybe they both can answer it. Just a little clarification, the agenda summary says that planning and development recommended for approval with conditions, and then on the one set of the notes, unless I'm reading two different ones, page 10 said, or packet page 526 says the motion failed three to three to approve it, but then, it says later on that it was approved with sixteen, that had six conditions, and later on, it said it was approved with 16. So, it was one, one previous and one current, or what, you know, can you give me an idea of what, what that's about?
The old one, I think, too.
Yeah, the PDC board was three-three, which I guess is the same thing as a no.
But it says in the package that it was approved, so that's why I'm a little confused. Not, that didn't come from you, that came from our staff that says...
I think that was referencing the old PUD.
Right, the previous ordinance is in there as well. So, the, the old ordinance is in there, but he's correct, it was a three-three, recommended for approval... in there. But he's correct, it was a three, three, recommended for approval with conditions, but a three, three stalemate, which is in denial.
Okay. And then, so is it with the 16 conditions or was it with the six?
The recommendation, the, the motion was for the 16 conditions.
Mm-hmm.
And then it was a three, three.
Okay. So as we stand right now.
The six, the 16 conditions. It came forward as a denial recommendation because of the three, three.
Okay, and you're happy, I mean, you can live with the 16 conditions, right? Okay. I guess, wanted to just clear, was it approved, wasn't it, and how many conditions, so.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for Dr. Wilburn? All right, thank you, Doctor. Joanne?
All right. Um, he did a great job summarizing a lot. Um, this is gonna take that extra little white area there in this kind of boot shape and change it to neighborhood commercial with a PUD, which is consistent with the remaining area. Right now, it's agricultural with mobile homes allowed. And this is a, um, tried to colorize it as much as I can, but I'm gonna go over that a little bit better quickly. Um, this is the wine event building. They're asking to increase their seating from 250 to 300. Um, the top is what was approved previously. The red in the bottom is the new building. You can see that there's one area that was kind of a slab before, and now it is part of the building that would ob, obviously accommodate for increased seating. And this is that building. Um, they did meet facade on this particular item and they had a lot of great landscaping here. That's why this picture's here. They do have some good landscaping throughout the site. This is the, um, restaurant building and it is also increasing seating from 150 to 200. And you can see the differences between the, the applications. Um, that's also an existing building and is one of the two that are ready for, uh, permit pickup. And this is that building. They did get relief from facade. Um, their landscaping has not made it since the previous application. So they're gonna have to put something around this building. But they are asking for relief from that metal, for those metal facades on this building again. These are two new buildings that are out there. The one in the, the back there is their marketplace. And then they have a storage building here on the left that you can see. This is looking from 491. And this is, uh, some outdoor dining that they have next to the out, next to the marketplace. There's also a little shed there that's, that's new on this plan. And this is an outdoor dining area that's adjacent to the marketplace. They are asking for some outdoor events. I'd marked it in purple on that site plan, you'll see it in a moment, but this is one of the areas they want to be able to have outdoor events. Previously, this was limited to indoor events. So this will allow them to have weddings or ceremonies, whatever, outside here in the, this area. This is what we expected the parking lot to look like. This is what, from the previous application. They were gonna take advantage of the natural setting and park between trees. Um, they have mu, mostly mulched mill pavement instead with parking. So this is what it looks like now. Um, so that, that site plan has been changed to reflect that. On the right is a temporary sign, but it is, um, an area they want to put on two signs. He touched on that. They want a deviation for two signs due to the length of the property on 491. I know at PDC, Dr. Wilburn mentioned that cars need to be able to slow down in both directions. The left picture is one of their, um, sign, directional signs they would like to have. That is allowable in the Land Development Code as a PUD. Um, he's correct, there's a lot of different uses here. So they're asking for relief and being allowed to have that directional sign throughout the campus. And this is a comparison quickly between the master plan from previous to, the left one is the new one. You can see the parking, the, the grain, the gray is all new. The purple blotches are the areas generally that they're talking about for outdoor events. You can see that the two existing buildings, they did add stormwater ponds by adding so much concrete. And then you have the new buildings up in red on the, on the left. And this is the master plan. Um, Dr. Wilburn is correct, we had no concerns about the number of parking spaces. Um, this is a multi-use event, and there's certainly adequate areas to park outside of these mulch areas under the trees as well. So that was not a concern of staff's.
Okay.
That's it.
Commissioners, any questions? You know, the biggest question I have is, is, you know, as a condition is, uh, I want these permits being picked up and paid for before anything else goes on. I mean, I, I don't know, do we need to add that in there or not?
Um.
Or, Madam Attorney?
I, I mean, it's, it's, it's already a requirement.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Okay, all right, thank you.
And I would just like to say that we're, um, fortunate to have that facility in Citrus County. It was unfortunate what happened with the lack of pulling permits for Keith Vane's, but, um, glad he's rectifying it and it's a real pleasure to have that facility here.
I agree a hundred percent with you. That's a beautiful facility. Uh, I think they're gonna do well out there and.
Exceptional.
Glad we're at this point here, at this, at this stage.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other, any other? All right, thank you. All right. With that, we'll open it up to a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Anybody here to speak for or against? Going once, going twice? All right, we're gonna go ahead and close the public portion of it. Commissioners, with that, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Doctor.
Does the report include the statues, the, like the lawn ornaments, the two horses and the, the ornament, the, the antique truck out front, like a lawn ornament?
Right. It didn't, but it, those don't have signage on them, so they're just artwork.
All right. So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve CPA dash A, PUD dash 21 dash 08 with the 16, um, with 16.
Conditions.
Conditions, yeah. With 16.
One second.
All right. So we got a motion, we got a second.
And, and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinances?
Yes, and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinances. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioners, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes four zero. Tell Phil congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. T3?
If this looks familiar to you, it should. Um, you did adopt this on September 14th, 2021. The correct language was in the backup material, but it was not actually on the ordinance that was given to you for signature. So, um, we are correcting that. This is the correct ordinance. We had added a little bit of language in there to make DEO happy, basically. Um, you saw it, but it wasn't in the final document.
With that, we'll go ahead and, uh, open it up to a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Anybody here to speak for or against? Seeing nobody, we'll go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kennard?
I make a motion that we adopt and authorize the chairman and clerk to execute corrected ordinance for CPA dash 21 dash 05.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kennard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Commissioners, any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes four zero. And let's see, with that, our next, uh, upcoming meeting is October 26th. I do believe we have a workshop on that morning. And then, uh, we got a one o'clock meeting. So with that, we adjourn.